Good evening, everyone, and welcome to a regularly scheduled meeting of the Pennfield Zoning Board of Appeals. Tonight's meeting is going to be video-recorded and broadcast live on Pennfield TV's government-access channel, which includes Spectrum Cable 1303, also online at pennfieldtv.org, and social media platforms, Facebook and YouTube via Town of Pennfield Television. Following the proceedings tonight, the video-recording will be available on the town's website and on streaming devices Roku, Apple TV, and Amazon Fire. You just need to search for Pennfield TV in your app store, and you should know that it is free. If anybody wishes to address the board tonight on any of the public hearing matters, there will be a chance for that public participation in several different ways. One way is that folks that aren't present tonight can call that phone number there, and they'll be on the phone, and they can give their comment or ask their questions on the phone. Another way is they can, you'll see me checking this every once in a while, I'm looking for it, see if there's any electronic comments. People can submit comments through the town's website as well. And then a third way is, of course, if you're here, present, we'll ask it on every application, is there anyone that cares to talk about this? And if you do, come on up, sit at one of the tables, and give us your name and address, and then go ahead with your comment. Again, we think that that, the town does a good job, we like to say every month, of publicizing our agenda in many different ways. And the reason they do that is so everybody in town, and out of town, actually, knows that if they want to come and comment on an application, they have the right to do so. Well, how does a town do that? Well, it publishes the agenda on the website and here at the town hall, sends postcards that we've all received, I'm sure. If you own property with a certain number, within a certain number of feet of the subject property, you're going to get a postcard that says, hey, this matter is on for consideration. If you wish to comment, feel free to do so. The town also makes applicants post the signs that we've all seen on the property, so when you're driving by or walking by, you see, oh, this property is a subject of an application. Same sort of thing. And again, we think it works well because we certainly welcome any comments, and we feel that it helps us do our job better. So I think tonight's meeting will take place in two parts. We're going to have a work session, take care of tabled matters, but there aren't any, so it's going to be a very brief work session. And then we'll get into the, tonight's applications. We'll ask the applicant and any applicant witnesses to come up to the tables, give us name and address. And then typically what we do is the board members will walk the applicant through the application. Rather than have the applicant recite all the details, because every applicant has submitted a very detailed written application, which we've all seen and gone over, we just think it's more efficient if we help the application, the applicant through the process. So, that having been said, I'd ask everyone to rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. Thank you. So the first matter on the work session is the approval of the minutes from the last meeting, which we did receive.
I'll move to approve as written.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion to approve the minutes and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we have no tabled applications, so we can blaze right through that item. We do have two applications that were scheduled to be heard tonight that have been withdrawn by the applicant. The first one, which has been withdrawn, is actually number one on the agenda, 3408 Atlantic Avenue, so I don't know if anybody's here on that one, but that's been withdrawn by the applicant. The second one, I think is number six, that is 1506 Empire Boulevard. Applicant has withdrawn that one as well, so I'm not sure if there's anybody here on that one. But let's proceed, then. I guess we'll start with number two.
All right. DeMarco Baytown Associates LLC, 1950 Brighton-Henrietta Town Line Road, Rochester, New York, 14623, requests approval for a special use permit for signage under section 250-10.3-A of the code to allow the addition of an LED electronic message board to an existing freestanding sign, which is not permitted under section 250-10.11-A, section 250-10.11-C, and section 250-10.11-E of the section, of the code at 1900 Empire Boulevard. The property is currently or formerly owned by DeMarco Baytown Associates LLC and is owned GB, SBL number 093.02-1-23.111, application number 25Z0021.
Great. Thank you. Nick, may we have your name and address for the record, please?
Yep. Nick DeMarco here for DeMarco Baytown Associates at 1900 Empire Boulevard.
And it's Paul. Paul, are you present? I see your name on the screen.
I am here. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm here to support Nick.
Okay, great. So again, Nick, if you don't mind, I'll just run through quickly the application as I understand it, and then you, of course, feel free to add anything that you like. But you are asking to basically put an LED sort of live sign on your, I would call it your main sign, right off of Empire Boulevard to Baytown Plaza.
Correct.
Like, you have the tower, the brick tower that's up there with the peak, and right now you have like little individual tenant signs, and the plan is to put a, I don't, I don't know the size.
Fifteen by seventeen.
Yes.
Seven and a half, so only the bottom half will become an LED message board.
Yeah, that's good. The photo would be good. If we, can we blow that up a little, cover up Paul's name? Yeah, there you go. That's great. Okay.
Perfect. So the top half there with Walmart Burlington, all the way down to available DeMarco, and then Community Bank, that is what's currently there. Changed some of the tenant signage on the bottom sections, but that's where we want to get to with that. That's going to be just static pylon sign panels. And then that bottom section is a seven and a half foot by seventeen-foot-wide LED electronic message board. That will be static messaging. It is a live, changeable image, but we will be only changing it every eight seconds.
Great. So what we see there is going to be on both sides?
Correct.
Okay. And, you know, our code doesn't allow the moving signs, and it's, I won't say it's archaic, but it's not, to me, there's a lot of towns across the state that I've seen that allow these signs now because they're a lot better technology-wise, they look nicer. And the biggest factor for me on this was the safety. People on Empire Boulevard, and maybe even Creek Street, if you can see down that far from it, but they're going to be driving, and are they going to be distracted because they want to see what message comes up next? And if, so if you could address that, I would appreciate it.
Yeah, so there have definitely been concerns about that, and there have been studies done with these digital message boards on main roads that state that the time that is the best to have these things up is the smallest, five seconds per image, and up to 12 seconds. And anything below five seconds would cause a distraction to drivers, and we're, we are planning to and proposing to change the signage every eight seconds, which should alleviate the distraction and should not be a distraction to drivers at all.
Okay. And obviously, if after it's up for a while, doing eight seconds, if you think 10 seconds is better, you can adjust that, I would think with a push of a button.
Correct.
All right, so in terms of the messaging, what's, what do you intend to have on the signs?
So we plan to put Baytown Plaza signage, logo signage for the plaza, logo signage for the tenants, and as well as Town of Pennfield PSAs, as you can see in some of the exhibits here. So that is an exhibit of four tenants, split up on the sign. And then we also have an example of a Amber Alert you could put on the sign for community PSAs, Dayton Weather, right there. And then that's an advertisement for a plaza event, which would be the Baytown Car Show. So we could advertise for the plaza, advertise for tenants, and with their logos, any community public service announcements, as well as any Town of Pennfield messaging that we could have from you guys as well. Something that comes to mind would be maybe one Pennfield High School, like football games can be on a Friday night, you could put an advertisement coming up every, for eight seconds on there, saying there's a home football game, things like that.
Yeah. Oh, that's, that's good. And the Town of Pennfield thing is something that these guys have heard a million times, because I live right in that area, and of course, everybody thinks we live in Webster, which is of course, of course, not the case. But okay, it's Webster Mailing, and it's Webster Schools, so you're going to have to decide if you're going to show Webster football games or Pennfield, but maybe the Buffalo Bills.
You could do both.
Yeah. But, so how about, what about brightness at, you know, at night? 10 o'clock, 11 o'clock at night? Is, that's, there's really no homes directly near there, but I mean, is it, is it going to wake anybody up because it's so darn bright or anything? I can't imagine it would.
Yes, for sure. So Paul might be able to have the specific nomenclature of the technical terms with it, but there are sensors on the, on the sign that adjust it with the lighting, so during the day it gets brighter, and then at night it gets dimmer, so it does not affect, does not affect the people driving by, or the traffic, or the other lights in the area, and it will always give a best view possible to the patrons viewing the sign.
Okay. And you mentioned before about public service announcements, you'll work with the town to, you know, do your best to honor the town's request to put up such public service announcements. That's great.
Yeah, we can, we can draw right from our office what goes on the, on the sign, so it's just a PDF upload, image upload.
And I understand that you have a, recently you had approval in Town of Perrington for a similar sign at, was it Perrington Square Mall?
Yep. So we have their digital message board on their pylon sign approved and should be installed later this year.
Great. Okay. I don't have any more questions. Any more questions for the board?
No, sir.
No? Let me just check. I don't see anybody calling in, nor do I see any electronic comments. Anyone in the audience care to speak about this application? No? Okay. Thank you. Then we will move to the consideration, first starting with the environmental, and I'd make a motion to declare this an unlisted action under seeker, and also issue a negative declaration.
I'll second.
All right, we have a seeker motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, now on the merits, I would move to approve the special use permit for signage, including the logo issue. I know some of the logos are higher than the 50% allowed, but that would be part of my motion to approve that as well. I, as I've already said, I think that a sign like this, first of all, that sign and the tower, I think is very well-maintained. It looks good, and this will only add to it. And I think it's more of a modern thing to do, that I understand the reason for the codes. You don't want flashy, distracting, ugly signs, if you will, and this is going to be anything but. So it gets us into the, into the modern era, if you will, and I like the fact that you're going to work with the town on public service announcements, the Amber Alerts, let's hope you don't have to do that very often. And just announcing community events as well, I think is great. So my motion is to approve the request.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thanks, everyone. Have a good evening.
See you, Paul. Thank you. Next application, please.
Great. Christian Incar DePaula, 1753 Baird Road, Pennfield, New York, 14256, requests approval for an area variance under section 250-14.3 of the code to allow an accessory storage building that is taller than permitted under section 250-1 point, dash 5.1, dash F12C of the code at 1394 Jackson Road. This property is currently or formerly owned by Christian Incar DePaula and is owned RR-1, SBL number 095.03-1-39.1, application number 25Z0022.
Great. Okay, we got four people, so I guess, is everybody here representing the applicant?
Yes, we're, yeah.
Wow, okay.
We're together.
Even odds here. Four of us and four of them. All right, so if you folks could just introduce yourselves, give us your name and address, I'd appreciate that.
Kara DePaula, 1753 Baird Road in Pennfield.
Okay.
Christian DePaula, 1753 Baird Road.
Thanks.
I'm Kyle Barber, I'm their architect.
Matt Tomlinson, Marathon Engineering.
Great.
All right, great. Thanks, guys. So thorough application, just to summarize it, you're looking to put a barn up, an accessory structure, and code requires it to be 20 feet tall, and you're looking to make it 25 feet, six and a half inches, so you're looking for a six and a half foot variance. Correct? Did I misstate anything? Just making sure we're, okay?
No, that's correct.
Why does it have to be so tall?
Well, there's several reasons.
Okay, give them to me.
And I'll, I'll talk a little bit about the site itself, and then I'll let Kyle talk about the structure itself. But the goal really is to create accessory building that's sufficient for the needs of Christian and Kara on the site, while they're not meeting the definition of the agricultural use, which this piece of property is large enough for a farm market to go on as of right, anything over five acres, and that would meet the definition for an agricultural structure, which could be up to 100 feet tall, as long as it's more than 100 feet from the property line, which this is. But in working with town staff, we've determined that it does fall under the personal storage accessory building. But they have the intention of keeping quite a bit of equipment in there, machinery, having gardening and agricultural uses for their personal use on the property. And so that's really what's driving the size, and the size drives some of the height. So I'll let Kyle talk a little bit to the massing of the building, appropriate with the house and everything else, as we go from there.
Yeah, so as, as Matt mentioned, we kind of determined what size would work based on the owner's needs.
Can I just clarify? When you say the size that will work, are you talking about the footprint, or are you talking about the height, when you're talking about the size?
The footprint.
Okay.
Yeah. So they're related, but, but the footprint specifically.
I was just wondering if you started with a footprint and then backed into the height, or if you started with the height and then figured out the footprint from that?
We started with a footprint, and, and that's based on, you know, the, it's a pretty sizable property, so.
About 15 acres, right?
Yep, that's right. So they've, so with 15 acres, there's, you know, needs, and as Christian and Kara can speak to, they've got some fairly ambitious plans, I think, for, you know, the things that they want to do and utilize, how they want to utilize the property for them and their family. And that requires some space for tractors, for equipment, for attachments, for tools. And so we wanted a sizable barn. They also didn't want to just, it wasn't just a storage space for them. I think they're, they're creating this, the whole site they're looking at in a holistic way, and so they're creating a family legacy here, and that includes the barn. And so they didn't want to just do just a storage barn. It has meaning and value beyond that, so it needs to tie to the, to the architecture of the house. It needs to fit with the house architecturally, proportionally, proportionally, it needs to fit with the site, and it needs to be something that has legacy value and is pleasing to look at, pleasing to experience, pleasing to walk through. So the footprint, the size footprint is, is pretty substantial, and it kind of leaned into needing a height that was proportional to that footprint, and so.
When you say need, do you mean from, like, an aesthetic purpose, or are you talking about from, like, a physical?
Architecturally.
Architectural. Like a structural.
Yeah, yeah, architecturally, yeah. So, you know, if it's, if it's a really low-slung, giant, wide building, it just doesn't look good with the house, it doesn't look good by itself, so it needs to have a little bit of volume, a little bit of height.
Yeah, so when you say look good, that, that's kind of what I'm getting at. Is there, like, an actual structural, structural need for it, or again, is it aesthetic?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's a function of both to a certain extent. Can you build a long, low building?
Right.
With larger structure members and, you know, putting some things in there? I mean, Kyle's the expert on that, but yes. Is it the most cost-effective? Is it the most aesthetic? Does it fit within the character of the neighborhood, which obviously we've tried to answer in some of the factors with other barns across the street and on the north side of Plank Road? No, that low slung doesn't really accomplish those, so.
There are other barns, both pre-existing.
Yeah.
Non-conforming uses, and ones that were granted variances that, that are more than 20 feet, right, in the area?
Right.
I mean, I think there was one that's about a mile away that we, that was granted an 11-foot variance.
And, and some are used for agricultural, some predate the code, right? So we do think that it's consistent as well within the neighborhood character as well.
I think one thing that kind of drew, so we want the height to be proportional, so it's not like this low-slung thing that doesn't match any of the architecture, doesn't match the character of the neighborhood, but we also want, because it's such a wide building, we want to get some natural daylight into the center. And in order to do that, we wanted some light, some clear story light on that center, that monitor part of the barn. And to do that, you got to kind of get a certain plate height to get those windows in there.
How tall is the house going to be?
It is, I don't know that offhand, but it's.
It's two-story, it's definitely.
It's a two-story, it's, it's 30-something.
Okay, so it's taller than, than this will be?
Correct.
Okay. Utilities are going to be, what utilities are going to be around to it?
We have water and sewer available. Sewer was provided up along Jackson Road as part of the pump station installation for the Rockwell Pine subdivision. Our firm did that design and subdivided off this parcel as well. And then, I'm not sure about gas, but electric will be provided from the street.
Okay.
I think you meant to the, this structure, not the house.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
So there will be sanitary water and electric provided to all street. You can see the structures are also linked together as part of this.
So it, I guess, to summarize what I'm hearing, it is possible to build it to code, but it is, for, I guess, mostly aesthetic reasons, you really want it to be this height, right? Is that, is that, the space isn't functional. It's not.
We do have concerns about snow and the roof line, the pitch of the roof.
The pitch?
I have spoken with, this original design originated with a, another company in Connecticut that I consulted with, and when I discussed the code with them a couple of years ago, they, they don't design lower than this, and they encountered this sort of code issue among many states. They, they service the whole New England area, and the company is based out of Connecticut. So they, they deal with not only these style barns, but also our climate, and one of the, one of the main considerations that the owner of the company, who is an engineer, discussed with me was the pitch of the roof line and the nature of building structures this size with the snow in our area, and being able to get it to appropriately slide off of, of a roof, and that's a consideration from a safety and structural standpoint that wasn't mentioned so far, but that came from the, the designer of the, this particular structure that we had then consulted with Kyle's company to, to match it, so to speak. So there's a daylight issue if you want windows, you really can't put windows in something if it's 20 feet or lower, and then there's the, the consideration of roof pitch as well. So that was another consideration to, to bring to the committee.
Yeah, and if I could also, I think Kara and Christian have also been extremely intentional with the sighting of the house. We've gone through many iterations to really land on this, to ensure that large buffers are left to all residential properties. We're 190 feet to the right of way, 205 feet to the road.
And lots of trees.
And that's the closest, and they've limited the clearing to kind of what they want to create for the yard, the gardens, everything else, with the intention really of leaving buffers to the wetlands, to the neighbors specifically. We're over 350 feet from the closest residential structure and exceeding that by quite a bit to the east and to the south. So, you know, from the character, the neighborhood considerations, fitting in with that, any potential impact, there's extremely limited sightlines to this, you know, the difference visually from the perimeter of the property, 20 feet versus 25 feet, especially with the mass of the house and the setback to it, are extremely minimal as we started looking at this, so.
We do intend to keep the tree lines along the roads, similar to what they are now, and the trees are anywhere from 20 to 50 feet high currently.
Yeah, I saw that in the application, that you're, you're looking to maintain that buffer. I have nothing else.
I have two questions. So, can you bring the, the rendering back up of the building, Andy? So if you were to match the pitch on the upper section to the pitch you had on the lower section, wouldn't that reduce the overall height, yet still address the pitch concerns? I mean, I'm assuming that if the pitch on the lower is at that level, it should be sufficient for the snow, couldn't you do the same as the top?
Theoretically, I think that there's a, there's a proportion that sort of works when, so if you get, if you get too low, it starts to feel kind of wide for its proportion, and so I think.
Yeah, we're just talking a couple of degrees here. Again, what I'm, what we're looking for, what I'm asking for, is some level compromise. So if you say, okay, if we lowered the pitch to match the lower section so that all the pitch across the building is the same, and the variance becomes one feet or two feet, you've, you've kind of worked at a compromise to say, okay, we've kept the aesthetics of the building the same, but we've worked, you know, with, with the, the neighborhood and the town to come within close to code as we could. Just asking if that was an option.
I would defer to Kara and Christian on that.
I mean, I just wonder if that affects, if you, you know, does that affect the, the functionality, because there, there is some function, it's not like it's just an empty space in that portion of the barn.
Right, no, it definitely does affect the, the upper space functionality. You have less access, so if you just talk about the snow concern, you have a, a roof portion that has less access, so if there was a difficulty or need to reach that area, you're, you're less likely to be able to do so from a safety standpoint. I don't have all of the details. I, I went through these discussions with, with a designer in Connecticut regarding this particular design, and tried to come up with iterations, and he had, he had done the, the calculations, and he had quoted me a number of different considerations, whether it be from an engineering standpoint, but also from a function standpoint, the light, the windows, that you really can't get the same function out of it. I can't, I'm not an engineer or an architect, so, and I didn't design this particular design, but he wasn't able to, to work within those numbers to try and achieve a compromise, because I, I started speaking with the, with, like I said, a different company regarding this design over the last year and a half, and been trying to come up with a way to not have to apply for a variance. And the designer of this particular barn, with a timber frame type structure, wasn't able to come up with a satisfactory structural compromise. So not being an architect, I can't speak exactly to the, the angles, but there's, there are a number of different factors, both functional and aesthetic, that play into it, and at least from consulting with the folks that we have so far, it feels that there are, there are functional aspects that that design is the way it is for a reason, and otherwise you have to change it and go to something else, and you're really, are only getting one functional story if you're getting down below the, the 20-foot code.
So you are, there will be an upper story, then?
There, yeah, that's the intention, yes.
So if you're putting windows on there to bring light down to the, I So if you're putting windows on there to bring light down to the, I guess I'm confused. The interior seemed to be all open, but it sounds like you're gonna be putting on a, a second floor in the building. What would that second floor be used for?
We don't have it all planned out yet. It's-
Well, if you're running water and power, I mean, I'm just trying to understand, is it purely for storage or-
Woodworking machinery. And then we'll be having, and agricultural machinery that all need to be cleaned. So I need water for utility. And I'm gonna be doing a fair amount of gardening and landscaping and greenhouse type work that also benefits from having water and electricity. Having, having lived the first nearly 50 years of my life, doing quite a bit of gardening and landscaping and tracking the dirt and mud that comes into the house by not having those types of spaces, I'm, I'm trying to keep a happy home life and keep some of those aspects separated. So I think it would be beneficial to have electricity for lights and for power, for woodworking machinery and, and water to keep things clean.
So that's my second segue is then, you walked right into the second question, which is, will there be external lights? And will you be taking your neighbors into account if those neighbor, if those, those lights are not gonna be disruptive to your neighbors?
Yeah, we haven't planned to that extent about external lights on the barn per se. I imagine it would make sense to have a few lights that would be non-obtrusive and around a doorway. But my intention is to keep things as minimal as possible, only serving the needs for safety, so to speak. And we don't have an exact plan on, on lighting, but it's certainly not gonna be something to display the structure, but to make sure we properly and safely light walkways and doorways when you need to get from place to place, especially as the days get shorter in the wintertime, that sort of thing.
Yeah, and, and again, with the, with the buffers and the separations, I would not anticipate any type of light spill or other intrusiveness from the lighting, from any structure out here.
That works well in the summer and not so well in the winter. So there's a reason I asked the question. And when the leaves fall, the lights can come through the wood. So those are my questions.
Yeah, I, I'd just like to ask a follow-up on George's first question. Because I know when you guys started to answer, you turned to your clients and looked. And then you gave a, a long answer, but I'm not sure that I, that I caught that it answered George's question. So I'll just ask it in a real simple way, not that you're-
Oh, no, that's fine, you-
So you're asking for 25 and a half feet, 26 feet. Are, are you telling us that this will not work at 23 feet?
From, from the consultation that I've had over the last year and a half with the designer of this particular design and, and any barn that has a functional second story, I've yet to be able to come up with a plan that can accommodate that. And I made every intention and goal to not have to come to this committee and apply for a variance.
Right.
I mean, I, you know, just to add to that-
So far I haven't, we have not been able to come up with, with something to meet 20 feet.
Yeah.
No, I'm not asking for 20 feet. I said, can you make it work at 23? Which would still be a variance.
Well, I'm not an architect and I, my sense was that it's either gonna be over 20 feet or not a functional second story. And the debate about 23 versus 25, we really haven't gotten to that degree of detail.
All right, well, fair enough, but I mean, I'm sure you can understand us asking the question. Because there is a difference between a six-foot variance request and a three-foot variance request. Now, it may be that reducing the variance request results in such a reduction in the functionality of the building that you, you say we, we want six feet in order to get the full function, and that's fine. I mean, that's, I'm not asking in order to insult you or your desires or your wishes here. I'm just, we are, we always, quite often we, we push back on these things because we're supposed to grant the minimum variance required to, to suit the applicant's needs. And what I've been hearing a lot of, it seems to me, is that the needs, whether it's aesthetics or functionality, gets you to the request that you're making for five and, five and a half feet or six feet, whatever.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I could, I, I do think that that is correct in that I think aesthetics can be subjective, right? And that's where there's a balance between the benefit to the applicant versus least relief grantable by the board or, or potential impacts. And I, I don't mean to keep coming back to it, but I do think it's very important in that the separations to the neighbors and potential impacts and the apparentness, you know, a lot of times a variance that's requested is for a building that's 30, 40 feet off the road, no landscape buffer. And it's like, wow, that's, that's substantial. And in this case, especially given the separations to neighbors and the buffers available and the massing of the house itself, which will be a substantial structure taller than it, I think that the request, while balancing the aesthetics and the minimum relief necessary, also has an extremely limited, if any, impact on the character of the neighborhood or the visual impacts potentially that this board might be bringing into consideration as part of the application.
No, that's good. And if I'm not mistaken, you look at that drawing across the road on Jackson, on the southwest corner, that little patch of land there, brown. Wasn't there an application a couple of years ago for, to build a big barn there?
Yes, you-
Right, okay.
There was, there was.
And we denied it.
You denied it.
In large part because there was a, I don't know if there was a height variance request there, but in large part because of exactly the lack of what you just talked about. That was gonna stand out that close to the road. I think there are setback variances as well. Big barn, which a barn in this area is, you know-
It was a barn.
Okay. But my point in bringing that up is that there, there isn't any buffering surrounding that. So I, I do want to ask you though, if I lived on Robert, if I was lucky enough to live on Robert Michaels Run or across the street where I believe these folks live, what am I, what am I gonna see? This whole property, the house, everything, what am I gonna see in February?
I think-
Or if I'm just driving by on Jackson and I'm going slow enough-
Yeah.
-that I turn and I look?
You're gonna see a glimpse through a pretty narrow opening about 40 feet wide in the tree line along the driveway. You're gonna see a structure that looks substantial, but in keeping with the overall mass of the house and, and then you'll be past it. There's a very limited view through that area.
Yes, sir. Off of Jackson.
Did you say this building was connected? These buildings would all be connected?
That's correct, that's the plan. There's a covered walkway between the greenhouse, the barn and the house.
Andy, does that change the dynamics of the conversation at all if they've actually connected the buildings?
That's where I was gonna go.
What, what makes an accessory structure versus a, an addition to the home?
Correct, yeah.
Good point.
Or what, what needs to happen to make it an addition to the home and not an accessory structure?
If they enclose a walkway into-
Yeah, we'd have to have an enclosed common, you know-
Connection.
Connection.
And if they did that, does that change this request?
I mean, the other thing we would have to look at is the, the code allows a maximum of one garage. And we'd have to consider, is this building now a garage? Be an attached garage, which wouldn't comply. I guess there's really nothing that says you can't have a storage addition on your house.
And I, I think it would potentially, we, we had quite a bit of back and forth as part of our administrative site plan review, which we're in the process of wrapping up, subject to our success or otherwise with the variance. And I've had back and forth with Andy and with Doug Sangster in the planning department about some of the definitions. And even if it was to be classified as a garage, then we'd have a potential variance request before you for two garages, with one being a substantial structure. So this seemed to be the most straightforward interpretation of, of the code as, as proposed. So-
So you raise a really good point in that you are still in the process of planning. And, excuse me, I forgot your name, sir. But three times in your description, you talked about, well, we're still finalizing, we're still finalizing, we haven't decided on lighting and things like that. That, I would kind of like to at least know some of those details or at least put them in the conditions that, that, you know, the, the lighting would, 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 would go through some type of review process. Because normally we ask that question, they tell us it's gonna be a single light over the door.
I'm sorry, I said that because I, I couldn't quote, you know, from the pictures, every light, but we're, we're gonna put, I, I would imagine that we, we pick, we, we put lights around doorways. But if, if you need to see that, I mean, I didn't come prepared to discuss the extent of every, every fixture.
Talking about a light that you have on the barn for safety reasons or whatever reasons that you can see from a mile away because it's so bright at night in February.
No, I have, I have no intention, we have no intention of-
I'm just assuming if you have an architect and you've done the renderings, the, the lighting scheme would have also been part of the process. And I was just asking to see the lighting scheme to understand-
Well, I imagine we would put a sconce near a door.
Yeah, we-
Just standard type of light near a garage and, and a door. But we have no intention of, of putting lights on top of or projecting to the building to, to show it in the middle of the night. It's, the goal is to have minimal lighting, but for safety purposes and, and not to light up the structure itself. I couldn't speak to the exact location other than a light by a door. You won't see it on the rendering, but it's essentially something for, to be able to get into your garage and get into the door near the garage.
Yeah, and if I could, we will be submitting, as soon as we wrap up the administrate, excuse me, administrative site plan approvals, which we're just about done with that. The building itself, the barn, assuming approvals, the house will come in for a building permit review package. And if there's a condition as it relates to lights complying with town code or no floodlights, that kind of thing, of course, as part of the building permit package, we'd be happy to agree to that being a condition.
And how, what's the, what's the highest off the ground you, you're gonna need a light? Any light on this building?
I don't know.
Usually it would be a couple of feet above a door, so-
Right.
10, 11 feet, somewhere in that neighborhood.
That's what I heard. I just, I mean, you're not gonna put a light on the peak, you know, that you can see from a five-mile line.
Even if we did, though, it would be a dark sky compliant light. It would, it would be pointing down only.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is the, is the pitch of the existing, or the house for the primary residence, is that the same 12 pitch, 11 pitch that this has on top?
Yes.
For the most part? So that's, so it, it ties together to carry that look-through and that's, okay.
Exactly, yeah.
All right, any more board questions? No. I don't see anybody on the phone, nor do I see any electronic comments. So I'll ask, anyone in the audience care to speak about this? Yeah, well, no, you're gonna have to come up, we'll make some room for you. Give us your name and address and go ahead and give us your comments.
I am Nicholas Labash, live on 1156 Plank Road. Get a corner from the property that's in question now. I just have a question, is there going to be some kind of a business?
No business.
No, we have no intention of-
The machinery that you have in-
We have no intention of creating a business. I, I do my, much of my own landscaping work and a 15-acre property has many needs to be dealt with. I'm already, I've already planted over 150 trees on the property and prefer to do as much of my own work as I can. And I don't have unlimited time, so machinery helps to accomplish that.
So the answer is no to your question, no business?
Sounds like he's gonna just have a lot of toys.
I have tomatoes currently growing on the property along with fruit trees. If, if you'd like, I can get you some tomatoes. Right, so I, I have intention to try and grow year-round if possible in a greenhouse and maybe even grow some, grow some things that don't usually grow in our climate, like figs and citrus with a small greenhouse.
Well, that's, that's wrong too, because I, I grow figs also.
Well, I, I'd like to do it in, in a way that can be as year-round as possible. And I understand that you can take trees in and out. But my goal is, is to, is to have the ability to grow as many different types of native plants as possible. And I think the, we wanna make the, the, the land, we wanna improve the land and make it as beautiful as possible and restore the, the, many of the native hardwoods and nut and fruit trees that have gone to waste over the last 80 years that the property's been vacant. And we have quite a few invasive species that I've been working on trying to manage over the last few, a couple of years. So we need the machinery to be able to do that. I don't have unlimited time or resources to do it with a shovel and a rake.
Well, I, I know what you're saying because I do it by hand every day.
Right.
So I don't know why I would need all the machinery and all that if it's not a business.
Well, if- I don't know how else to explain it other than-
No, I'm understood and, and I'm, you know- If, if this is voted tonight, there'll probably be discussion amongst the board members about putting in a requirement that no business operate out of the location.
Correct.
I'm sure they'll agree to it because he's already said he's not gonna do it.
Okay.
So thank you for that comment. Good.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else care to speak about this? Come on up.
I wanna add, is that the picture that it's-
I'm sorry, but you have to come up so they, they can hear you on the recording. And please give us your name as well.
Ludmilla Labash, and I live at 1156 Plank Road, right in the corner over there.
Right.
And we have so much traffic there already that I was hoping that this would not create any more traffic. Because we have the school buses, buses from Penfield there now. There is so much things going on there. When we moved into the country, I thought we moved into the country. Boy, were we shocked.
Well-
I can't, I can't imagine that adding five and a half feet to the barn will create more traffic.
When we moved there, the houses on Plank Road, the big houses there by shoots, none of them were there. And now we are surrounded by everything. I'm ready to sell and move out. Now, the picture that I saw, is that what it's gonna be? Not this one, the other one. Where it has a house and a bu- this one.
That, that's a single-family home.
That's a rendering of the house.
Is that what I'm looking at?
With a two-car garage.
Both the building that was shown before and the house? Which part is, is the house?
You're looking at the house on the right side of the screen. That's the garage and that, there's the house. It's a single-family residence.
I believe the-
The barn is to the left.
The depiction of the barn is not the same.
That's the barn, I think, right?
Yeah, that's the barn and the rest of it is the house.
So where is the barn gonna be facing? Facing Jackson Road?
If, if you're gonna come into, if you look at that footprint right there-
Okay.
The, the barn actually, it angles there, you see it 45 degrees.
That's the barn.
And if you were coming down Plank Road, I suppose the, the widest-
But if you come down Jackson Road?
You probably won't be able to see it on-
You still probably will not see it.
You will not be able to see it because we, like we said earlier, we intend to keep the trees surrounding the property. So we, we're trying to keep the property and maintain the, the aesthetic that goes along with the neighborhood. We're, you know, it-
And I share the same concerns. I, it's the one, one aspect of the property that I have a reservation about is the traffic, the noise. And thankfully, that tends to be at certain times of day. But if we could have a noise variance or ordinance, if we could deal with people's mufflers and motorcycles and all the things that come with summer driving.
You're gonna get those.
Those are very disturbing things. And even, even that blinking light, the, the four-way stop. And people know when they've got a free strip of road to blast down a 35 mile an hour road. And I grew up on Lake Avenue and it's a drag strip between, between the cemetery and one of the side streets where there's, there's basically two lights within a one and a half to two mile range. And people come from the beach back and forth and rip down that road. I grew up on that and my parents still live there. And I think to myself, boy, I've always wanted to live out someplace quieter. And when we found this property of 15 acres and my enjoyment of being able to, to grow and garden, do all those extra things and to have an orchard and all of that, you know, I don't have a lot of, a lot of time. But when I do have time, those are the things I enjoy doing. And I always think to myself, well, there's always a trade-off with everything. And one of the trade-offs in that location is a blinking red light, a four-way stop, and people who just take off at any moment. And there isn't much in the way of patrolling there. People know, you know, the, the room they have. People know, you know, the, the room they have, and, and how fast they can go, it's very easy to go 50 miles an hour instead of 35. So those things bother me about, about that property as well, and we always make compromises in our head, and I think, well, I grew up on Lake Avenue, this is better than Lake Avenue, but my, my father to this day talks with the police officers at the public market, say, when are you guys gonna come down and patrol more? And they put up the electronic blinking signs to show people their speed, but we go visit on Sunday nights and have dinner, and you go back, you're taking your life into your hands with the way people drive. And, I mean, just down Atlantic on Sunday, I had a Corvette come cross a double line, must've been going 80 miles an hour, blew through a, a red arrow. And so it happens everywhere, and I wish there was something that could be done to mitigate that. Boy, my intention is to plant as much evergreen as I possibly can, to create visual buffers, sound buffers, but I know we'll never get rid of that stop-and-go plain traffic. Is there a way to create more? I'd be in favor of creating more stop signs and, and traffic signals to slow people down. I'm very conscious about looking at my speedometer as a, as a future resident, and having three young boys, and being a kid who used to play out in the middle of a side street, because we didn't have the room to play anywhere else, and knowing, you know, that those things happen. So, I share your concern about the, what has become of rural property. My, my goal and intention is to try and have a little peace and maintain that, and I hope that, that other folks do, but unfortunately, big pieces of property are getting subdivided, and you look historically anywhere in the country, but around Rochester, Greece and around Decoy, it used to be nothing but farms, and, and, and now there're subdivisions and cracks. And I wish more people would do what our future neighbors do, and grow their own food, and take care of their own places, rather than just have a postage stamp and, you know, three or four vehicles on their, in their driveway and a boat and, and everything else. So it's a different way of living and thinking, but, you know, the, the town itself has a new bus depot. Hopefully that's not too disruptive, but there're certain times of year where it sounds like that may affect you. And my intention is hopefully to create peace, rather than the opposite, and...
Well, I think that's, that's one of the reasons we had the question about a business, and you've made clear that it's not your intent, and Matt made the point, well taken, that, you know, this variance request is not gonna result in any increased traffic, so, point, point well taken. Any other items you'd like to address?
So you're planning on growing trees?
I've, I've already planted 150 new trees, I have, I've planted 30 fruit trees between the fall and spring of this past year, planted 100 pine trees that have struggled a bit because of the not being on site, not being able to necessarily take care of all the invasive vines that wanna take over, but I have intention of, of replanting the, where the dead ash trees are coming down, and planting native species, oaks and chestnuts and various other types of trees in that, that back tree line, among others.
By the way, don't plant any astas.
The deer like them.
I planted a deer-eating column.
I'm, I'm getting really good at feeding the wildlife around here, that's for sure.
Any astas, it's never gonna work. Well, you know, I hate to say this, but you know what's gonna happen? The people that you denied a few years ago to build a barn, they're gonna come back?
Well, and I'm sure you'll be here when we have that meeting. No, unless you move, which I hope you don't move.
I like that neighbor.
Yeah, well, that's a beautiful property as well, but...
I don't know these neighbors, but that neighbor...
The reason I brought that up is just to draw the distinction between, on the east side of Jackson Road, there's a ton of buffering, natural buffering, and they've created more. On the west side, where he wanted it, it's just not the case. Now, if he were to go and build a forest around it, maybe he'd have a better chance of getting approval.
Now, we are so built up there that there's no...
Yep.
It's just too much.
Okay. I'll ask if there's anyone else that wants to speak about this application. Thank you both very much for coming in. And I don't see any phone calls, I don't see any electronic comments, so let's move to consideration.
Okay. For the environmental, I'd make a motion to declare this a type-two action, requiring no further review.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
So for the, to the merits, I would make a motion to approve this. It is significant, it's 30% increase, but it is on 15 acres of land. I think the trees and the buffering and the layout and where it is make it unique. Also, there are plenty of accessory structures surrounding this area that are the same or greater, both have received variances and that are pre-existing, non-conforming uses. So I, I don't think it's gonna change the character of the neighborhood. Yeah, that we probably could try and push them to, to reduce it a little bit more, but I, I, I don't think that it's gonna stand out because of the height of the house, and it's pretty close to the house, so it's, it's, I think the house is gonna take the, the brunt of the, the eyesight, of the, of the visuality to it, so I, I don't think it's gonna change the character of the neighborhood. I would want a condition to have, to make sure any lights that are put out be dark sky compliant. Another condition, that no business is operated out of it, which I don't think there will be, but we will put it as a condition. So that's it, I would make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve for the reasons stated, and a second, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good luck, thank you for coming, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Next application, please.
Jeffrey A. Putney, on behalf of Dorothy Jean Reed, 53 Sebastian Drive, Rochester, New York, 14625, requests approval for an area variance under section 250-14.3 of the code to allow a larger accessory storage building than permitted under section 250-5.11-F3B of the code at 53 Sebastian Drive. The properties currently are formerly owned by Penfield Trailer Court Incorporated and is owned MHP. SBL number 138.10-2-3, application number 25Z0023.
Has anybody noticed that the reading of the application sign is just, it, it's just so much nicer?
Stella.
It's more, it's so youthful, that is the word, youthful.
Wow, that's a good dig.
Wow. Why do I feel like an HR thing is gonna happen here? It's more pleasant.
She's getting a kick out of that, awesome, way to go. All right, that was sort of an inside joke. Okay, we may have your name and address for the record.
Dorothy Jean Reed, 56 Bridge Meadows Drive, Spence Park.
And I'm Jeff Putney, I'm her son-in-law, 43 years, I think it is, and she's...
Mate, you better know.
And I'm from Hamlin, and mom has lost her husband three years ago, and has come to a point medically, as well as physically, being able to take care of a three-bedroom house that they've lived in for, since 1976, and gonna move close, like five trailers down from her other daughter. So she's going to become your newest...
Great.
Penfield resident, if the trailers, the trailers there, we're in the process of setting things up, and need a place to put things.
Excellent, so it was a thorough application, much appreciated, all the information was there. I did note that there is a letter from the, I guess, the property management for the, the trailer park that indicated they're, they're, they were okay with the, the installation. So you are asking to put a 10 by 14 accessory building, that would be a total of 140 square feet, where currently by code, a maximum of 100 square feet would be, would be permitted. Could you talk to you a little bit about why you need the additional space and, and how it would be used?
For storage. Mom has been caretaker of her sister that's challenged in living in assisted living, and we've got her goods currently at the house that we've tried to downsize, as well as 50 years of her living in Spence Park that we were trying to downsize. She also has a yard swing, and we'd like to store that in the shed also, and that just takes up, yeah, we can disassemble it. She's not able to do that, and my brother-in-law and myself are the two that would, would be, and we're both approaching that age that it'd be much easier for us just to...
Just put it in there completely?
Put it in there complete, and that takes up, you know, very, just shy of eight foot long, and they got a four-foot wide footprint, you're almost 32 feet just there to get that in. It's part of the reason that we're looking for something with the double doors, so that we can walk it through and push it off to one side, and you get, you, you narrow it down, and as you, there's a lot of air...
No, understood.
Around it, so...
So...
Looking for some added space to put mom's stuff, as well as her sister's.
Yeah, makes sense. Would you be running any power out to the shed?
We do wanna have power in it, and part of the reason for that is we're, we're energizing for a chairlift and lighting on the deck, so the plan is to come from the power pole and come to the corner of the shed that is set in behind the corner of the deck, and then come out of the shed with one dedicated line for the chairlift, and then a second, a, a lighting circuit and a power circuit inside the shed, so we can plug something in, but also the deck that we're putting, I want to have post-lights on that, so I need to come out of the shed with power to the deck, running a transformer, and possibly having a 110 outlet, so if we're in the yard with a weed whacker or something, but nothing substantial.
Gotcha, and have you spoken to the neighbors about the fact you'd be adding some external light?
Right now, they're vacant lots.
Okay, so then, you couldn't have spoken to them.
They're in, they're in the process of revitalizing that park, and she currently has one brand-new tri-double, like, would be two or three trailers away from her. There's like three spots to the south of her that are vacant, and there's three older ones that are across the street, sort of spread out. We have, she hasn't moved in, so we haven't met any of the neighbors to talk about them.
Yeah, got it, no, so generally, when, when we know there's gonna be exterior lighting, we generally like to make sure that the, you've had conversations with the neighbors and things like that, just to be considerate and ensuring that the light doesn't, doesn't affect them. Would you be putting any light up on the building itself on the outside?
If anything, a sconce on either side of the door, but not anticipating doing that.
So, pretty limited lighting, then?
Yes.
Okay, I don't have any additional questions.
Any other board questions?
No. Wait, did you check with the neighbor five units down from you to see if they're okay with it?
That one, I just had no objection.
So, I see it's the day of the snark, okay.
I got it.
I guess the only question I had here, technicality, is a rented, as a, as a parcel, that's, you know, it's, it's a rented lot, how does the variance work with, you know, the tenant leaves and all of a sudden, how's that variance?
I think it goes with the property.
Does it go with that, okay.
Yeah.
That's all I had.
That's a good question, and that's, I think, why we have the letter.
That's why we have the letter from the property owner, right?
Okay. Okay, so, no call-ins and no electronic comments, so I'll ask, does anybody in the audience care to speak about this that isn't the neighbor five units down?
She's calling for him around the corner.
So, I'm sensing that they're attacking the older guys, you notice that?
Okay, all right. In any event, all right, so let's move to consideration then.
Yeah, so we'll start with the seeker, and I would say that this is a type-two action pursuant to seeker, and should require no additional.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
As to the merits, I would move to approve this. Obviously, the, the applicant is downsizing, which is, we all know is significant, as well as storing some, some additional items for, for other family members. While it is a bit, you know, it is kind of excessive, it's around 60%, you know, 40% increase over the overall, because there's no one right there close to them, the property owner is okay with it, and it meets a need both from a standpoint of storage, as well as, you know, providing for the chairlift and things like that, I would, would to approve it.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to approve for the reasons stated, and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good luck.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next application, please.
Nelson Turellis, 23 Creek Hill Lane, Rochester, New York, 14625, requests approval for area variances under section 250-14.3 of the code to allow a garage that is larger than the residence's principal structure, as required by section 250-2.2 of the code with less setback than required under section 250-5.1-F1 of the code at 23 Creek Hill Lane. This property is currently or formerly owned by Nelson and Pamela Turellis, and is owned R-1-20, SBL number 108, 108.15-2-32, application number 25Z0024.
Excellent, good evening. If you just give your name and address for the record, please?
Nelson Turellis, 23 Creek Hill Lane.
Thank you.
Pam Turellis, 23 Creek Hill Lane.
Thank you. So you are here for, the public notice said that you were here for both a structured or garage larger than the property, but I guess that's been negated, after staff determined the measurements were okay, and we're not here for that anymore, but the notice went out as that. But we are here for a variance, because you're looking to build 3.2 feet closer to your property line than allowed for a garage addition in the back. And from what I understand, in this, it's basically, it's the placement of where the garage currently sits in relation to the house, you can't build that same-sized structure closer to the house, because the house is in the way, impeding it from going that one direction, and so you're looking to basically follow the driveway line, I'll say, the driveway line down, which is about three, three feet, a little bit more than three feet than allowed. And this is to allow for a little more storage, because you currently have a one-car garage, and I guess here in, in New York State, it's nice to have a little more space to put a car inside the garage with storage in the, you know, with a, you know, a quarter of the year, you know, in snow and inclement weather, and so you're looking to do that. Question for you, were there any other designs that you were able to figure out that could have been closer, or is this really the, the, this was the one that worked in terms of the, the needs you had, and based the size requirements that you had?
Yes, I was trying to do it in the back of the house.
Separate.
But separate, but obviously with the variance, I would need more space.
Got it.
So that was, no.
Right, right, so in a sense, you're doing an addition instead, because detached shed in the back, you would've had larger setbacks, and you would've bothered, and, okay, makes sense, makes sense.
Is this a garage that's attached, so like you drive through the garage to get to the other garage?
Yes.
It was a double deep?
Addition.
I had just...
Yeah, it's like deep, a deep garage.
It's a double deep.
Yeah.
And it's not the same width?
It'll be a little wider.
It'll be a little wider on the backside.
Why a little bit wider?
Because I had more, more storage, I had to put...
So you could get a car and storage in there?
My, my car and my two motorcycles.
I'd like to know these things.
Perfect, perfect.
It said motorcycle?
He did, yeah, it did say motorcycle. Perfect. In terms of any lighting facing your neighbor, there's a hedgerow there, kind of on the edge there, so the visual-wise, there's nothing right there at the edge where you see, you won't have any lights pointing towards the neighbor's side...
Oh, no.
...that would, you know, impact them from being closer.
I have one on the opposite side, on the house side.
Okay.
Just looking back.
Back towards the yard?
Yeah, back towards the yard, and once I put the, that section of garage, they'll even see it less.
Okay, perfect. That is all I have for questions.
Okay, any other board questions?
Nope, no.
No. All right. No phone calls, no electronic comments, anybody in the audience care to speak about this? No? Okay, very good, let's move to consideration then.
Okay, for seeker, I'll move this to type-two action pursuant to seeker, requiring no further review.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
And the merits?
And the merits. I will move to approve the variance of 3.2...
I will move to approve the variance of 3.2 feet. There's no undesirable changes that were identified by being 3.2 feet closer. It'd be no different than if it was, you know, 3.2 feet the other way. We wouldn't, you know, you wouldn't see the difference really in terms of the neighbors. The driveway runs up that one edge already, so it's already creating that line, I guess, where you'd expect to see a garage going in. There is only a single-car garage on-site right now, and so that additional storage here in our area is additional, or is good for vehicles in the wintertime. Nothing in the environment for physical impacts were identified. While the, while it is self-created, it's also out of need to be able to try to stay in that space. They did look at doing alternatives in terms of a detached structure in the back, but that had more impact in terms of the zoning code than building a attached structure that required a smaller variance. And on that, I'll move to approve.
Second. All right. We have a motion to approve and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. The next application, as we noted earlier, has been withdrawn, so we'll go to number seven. Tim Horton's?
James Brooks, Customs Sign Center, on behalf of Tim Horton's, 1786 Empire Boulevard, Webster, New York, 14580, requests approval for a special use permit for signage under Section 250-10.3-A of the code to allow a second freestanding sign, whereas a maximum of one freestanding sign is permitted under Section 250-10.12-C of the code at 1786 Empire Boulevard. The property is currently or formerly owned by Tim Donut U.S. Limited Incorporated and is owned GB. SBL number 093.15-1-56, application number 25Z0026.
Okay. We have the applicant appearing virtually, but we could have your name and address. We'd appreciate that.
My name's James Brooks. My address is 3200 Valley View Drive, Columbus, Ohio, 43204.
I'll go through a few of these pieces, and let's make sure we're on the same page. Tim Horton's currently has a site that they want to put an additional sign on from the Creek Street driveway side, where they currently have a sign that is on the, what is it, what is that, Jackson? No, Empire, Empire Boulevard there, on the opposite side. They're kind of in, they're kind of sandwiched between two major roads, within a sense, two entrances to the property. And so you're looking to have an additional sign at the roadside on the Creek Street side to allow for better visibility, to see the entrance, because the building's kind of blocked by another structure, and it's kind of blocks the view for it, in a sense. So it's difficult to see from the roadside. Is that about correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And in placing the sign, it doesn't look like you need any variances for size or location because it all falls within, outside of the right-ofways, and it is under the size that requires a variance. That's correct?
Yes.
Okay. And the sign will be similar to the sign on the other driveway, correct?
Actually, the sign, the other driveway is a pylon sign.
Yep.
This sign basically reads the same, but it is a monument-style sign.
So in a sense, it's lower to the ground where the other one is up in the air higher?
Yes.
Okay. But the same, in a sense, the same visual impact for the size of the sign and those things?
Correct.
Okay. It'll be illuminated the same way as the other sign?
Yes. It's LED internally illuminated.
Okay. And I think that's all I had for questions then.
Yeah, the only question I have is, you know, Tim Horton's has been there for quite a while, so why do you need the sign now?
Basically, they have that Creek Street driveway entrance that is really not identified as a Tim Horton's entryway. And it is, it does run as an entrance from both Empire and Creek Street.
Yeah, I guess I'd add to your answer that since Tim Horton's was built there, we have had further development.
Yes.
And so there are other businesses there and on the Creek Street side, so to call out Tim Horton's a little bit, even though it's been there a while, I think is a fair thing.
Didn't we do something with, is Taco Bell in that area?
Yeah.
Yeah, all of they have, they have signs on both sides.
Well, I think Chipotle.
Chipotle, yeah.
They'll be next. They'll be next to come in and ask.
Oh, yeah. Well, I went for them to come in and ask to size their sign up because remember when the Taco Bell came in there, they put their sign perfectly on Empire, so you can't see the other, you can't see...
All I know is the lines are always long there. As you guys know, I live around the corner, so, okay.
That's in Webster, right?
Yeah, right. Just ask the Baytown Plaza sign where you're located. Oh, Valvoline, they're going to kill me. All right. So I don't see any phone calls, nor do I see any electronic comments. Anyone in the audience or up here care to speak about this application anymore? No? Great. Okay. Let's go to the consideration.
Okay. I'll move this as a neg deck for the unlisted action under seeker.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And then to the considerations, the property, you know, while the business has been there for a while, there is a need for, that was identified for the Creek Street side, since it's difficult to see the building for the Tim Horton's actually right from Creek Street until you're right on top of it, which makes it a little more, I guess, I brought out this, this would be a little safer to be able to see the driveway, so you know you're stopping, know you're signaling, getting ready to turn in, as opposed to driving by and then slamming on the brakes type move, which can occur because the building's a little bit difficult to see from the Creek Street side sometimes, depending on your direction of travel. Nothing was identified with a sign that would interfere with the highway or the sidewalk areas. It is setback far enough, so there's no variances required for that. It'll be illuminated the same way as the other sign. And nothing that was identified that would be detrimental to neighboring properties since there are other businesses in the area. So I'll move to approve.
Second.
All right. We have a motion to approve, and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for appearing. Have a good night.
Thank you.
And I think that was it for applications.
The only one I noticed that Laura didn't show up in, I think, the fourth application for other minutes to make sure it shows that she missed the first part and was here for the second part.
The minutes will show that I was here.
Wow.
Perfect.
Do we have a second?
Yes, I'll second the motion that Laura was here, yeah.
I'm going to vote against that.
I thought she was on a cruise, so.
All right, folks. That's all, folks. Thank you. See you next month.